All right, six thirty before any of this meeting started. First of all, open session prayer by Wayne Taylor and prayer of allegiance by Donald Stunt.
Let us pray. Our righteousness and mercy are God and Father in heaven. Hallowed be thy name, in heaven and in here. We approach your throne of mercy and grace at this time, an attitude of prayer and thanksgiving. We are thankful for all of the blessings of life and we're thankful that we can be here tonight to serve overton county schools in this capacity. We pray that our decisions will always be guarded by, directed by, and in harmony with your divine word. Forgive us of our sins and shortcomings upon our repentance and profound faithful in the judgment, we ask for a home in heaven. This is our prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
And then prayer and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number four, approval of the minutes from the December fourteenth twenty twenty-one meeting. Need a motion? Motion by Rick Dodson. Second by Mitch Stone Suffer. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Number five, additions or deletions to the proposed agenda? There is two things that we need to add. I sent Crystal list the stuff and I probably told her the wrong stuff, but item number two under new business, we need to consider approval of the new teacher salary pay scale. Then item number three, consider approval of the video board option for the scoreboard. And before we take a motion on that one, when we get to it, we'll have Mr. Chaney to get up and speak to that option. So that'll be number two and three. Any other additions or deletions? Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by?
German Hicks.
Second by Wayne Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, approve the January eleventh twenty twenty-two meeting agenda. Motion by Wayne Taylor.
Second.
Second by Ms. Alice Reed. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number, executive action items. Number one, approval of the fence installation repair bid. Awarded the Rocky Top Fence for thirty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. That was the only bid we received and if I'm not mistaken, those are from multiple schools that was going to get repaired and that was part of the Esser two point oh funds as well. So need a motion? Motion by Rick Dodson.
Second.
Second by Mitch Stone Suffer. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Consider agenda, I read through all these and we'll approve all at one time. Number one, letter of resignation from the following, Wayne Sales, attendant supervisor. Number two, fiscal year twenty-two, Carl Perkins revision number three. Number three, fiscal year twenty-two, ARP IDEA revision one. Fiscal year twenty-two, ARP IDEA preschool original budget. Fiscal year twenty-two, ARP IDEA preschool revision one. Fiscal year twenty-two, early literacy network grant. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar. And fiscal year twenty-two, general purpose school budget amendment number one. And all of these were in email that was sent out to Crystal. Most of the amendments were Esser funds that were moved over to balance out those budgets.
I would like to say right now about Wayne Sales' resignation, he was a, he was a, he is a good asset for our school system. He's worked hard and I've really enjoyed working with him and I'd just like to kind of go on record and say how much I appreciate all of the, he's done for the school system and, and I wish him well. He's going into, he's taken a different career path and I hope him the very best. He was a good person to work with.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. And the school calendars, both of those are attached in your packets tonight as well for the next two years.
About the school calendar, I know it's next year, the fall break and spring break fall here in the pastry, but they pay them before the fifteenth ends. That's it.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Motion.
Motion by Mike Gilpatrick. Second by Ms. Alice Reed. Any discussion?
Hey, just real quick, I am, I'm proud to say this is the first time since I've been on the board, we've done two years in a row and all that's something we've wanted to do for a while. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. New business items, number one, consider second reading of the approval of the following board policies as recommended by T S B A. Four point two oh nine, alternative credit options. Five point three oh two, sick leave. Five point three oh three, personal and professional leave. Five point three oh six, military leave. Five point seven oh one, substitute teachers. Five point eight oh one, director of schools recruitment and selection. Six point three oh four one, title non and sexual harassment. Six point three oh five, student concerns. And six point five oh oh, special education students. And those were the first reading last month, this is the second reading. Need a motion? Motion by Mitch Stone Suffer. Second by Bruce Hudgens. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, consider approval of the new teacher pay scale. And once we decide this, we need to decide timeline. So before we do, if anybody wants to make a motion on a timeline or when this needs to go into effect, we need to decide that first, so.
Is this the same proposal we had last month?
Same proposal we had last month and we met with Ms. Oliver and the group that met that time. And this is the proposed draft that's in your packet.
Now, Mike, does this put us like in the average of the upper gumbling? I mean, we're, we're, I don't want to say where that rank us, but will that put us somewhere in the middle? We may not be at the top, but we don't want to be at the bottom of that.
Based on what we looked at, and I, Ms. Oliver can correct me if I'm wrong, there was a few buckets we were off and we were six to seven hundred dollars a year off and lower on some of the buckets, if I'm not mistaken. But for the most part, when we looked at Clay County, DeKalb County, Smith County, we didn't look at Putnam because they're a bigger scale, but we looked at some similar to our size and we were very close in comparison.
When we did the analysis, we were farthest away from DeKalb County and the closest to Pickett County. Just looking at those two and everything else kind of fell in between. And this puts us right in range with those two, those two systems, which puts us right in the middle of everybody.
Are we able to make this effective immediately?
I think after talking to Crystal that if we made it effective for the February check, is that correct?
We did go back and said maybe the March to give, I think I told you two June checks and three June checks.
Okay.
I miscounted. It's three June checks.
So if we made it effective for the March check, then it would be March.
Or give like half of the year.
It'd be a six month, year, so it'd be March, April, May, June, then in June they get the July and August check also. So that would put us at six months, that would give us half of this year. Then obviously next year it'd be the full year. So if we made it effective March and then, if I'm not mistaken, that'd probably be their check right before the break, the spring break, the, the new pay would go into effect.
I'd like to see us do it if you can now, in March.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we accept the proposed draft with a beginning in March timeline. You don't make that motion.
I'm making that motion.
So, motion by Mitch Stone Suffer that we accept the proposed draft with the effective date of the March paycheck and second it by Ms. Alice Reed. So any other discussion on that motion?
And, and just for the record, this is affordable for this year without pressing any hardship since we're already in this budget?
Yeah, based on what Crystal and I had looked at from the B E P funding, that we should be okay.
Well, I mean, make it effective to the March.
In March, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All right, so we're spending money, so let's roll call.
Can we just, to state that, to be sure that it, most of them will be on the March, but that is basically the ten month staff. So we do have some eleven and twelve month staff that there's not be a little bit different. I don't want anybody to be confused, but we could just say half of their pay this year. It would be half of their checks this year.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right, William Maston.
Yes.
Dapha Style.
Yes.
Ricky Dodson.
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick.
Yes.
Mike Hayes.
Before I cast my vote, I've got a spouse and a son in the school system, this will affect them. My vote's in the best interest of the school system, but my vote's yes.
Jordan Hicks.
Yes.
Bruce Hudgens.
Yes.
Alice Reed.
Yes.
Mitch Stone Suffer.
Yes.
Wayne Taylor.
Yes.
Nine four zero, sorry, ten four zero.
One thing too, I gotta have some Ken Pope and the sister-in-law's in the school system to declare that here.
I have a daughter and a son-in-law. I have nobody in the school system.
I'm not having the school visas.
You're good with that?
Yes.
So, motion passes. Item number three, consider approval of the video board option for the scoreboard. And before we make a motion, I'm gonna let Mr. Chaney get up and talk about the option. I know this is something that we just kind of finalized today as far as getting a quote on, but based on our meeting with the contractors today, they need their plans before they submit their bids on the twenty-fifth for the foundation plans, so they'll know what size foundation they'll need to bid for that portion of the scoreboard because the contractor will be responsible for building and getting the foundation ready and they will be responsible for installing the scoreboard once we order and get it here. So, Mr. Chaney?
So, before we get into that, I'll just let you know that I was up here earlier today and we met with prospective contractors, had what's known as a pre-reading at the high school. All contractors came, we discussed the, the scope of the project timelines and the intricacies of the project, gave them an opportunity, opportunity to walk around, visit the job site as they're preparing their bids. We, we let them know that if they needed to come back for another visit before finally submitting the bids, you know, what process to follow to do that. So, the, the bidding process is, is on the way. The bid opening will be here in this room, scheduled for January twenty-fifth, so, at two P M. So, when I was here last time, there was some questions about adding a video component to the scoreboard. The scoreboard that has been approved, the cost of that, eighty-two thousand zero, eighty-two thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. That money has, has been approved for the scoreboard, but it did not include any video. So we went back, the scoreboard is one of three components that is being purchased outside the general contractors to help with delivery dates so the project can be completed. The bleachers, home investor, the scoreboard, and the athletic field lighting, they're all being purchased, but that will be over, overseen and coordinated by the general contractor. So, in talking with the scoreboard manufacturer, this is something that they, they do a lot of, the, the video component is starting to get more and more widespread, more and more used. But we settled on two options to bring back to you for consideration. So, the first option, the, the overall size of the, the scoreboard and video components, twenty-four feet wide by nearly twenty-nine feet tall. So, the second option is twenty-four by thirty. So, I'll go over in detail. I'm too close to see what I'm doing here. So, the first option, if you'll remember, the scoreboard, it had this component, there were four sponsorships down here and then the Livingston Academy Wildcats. So what we've added is this, this portion of the scoreboard. The size of the video screen is, we'll call it ten feet by twelve and a half, nine point nine by twelve point six, but, so in doing that, it's added four more potential sponsorship And so the, the cost of that is a hundred and eighteen thousand fifty-five dollars. You've already approved eighty-two thousand fifty-four for, for the base scoreboard. So, that would be an increase in cost of thirty-six thousand dollars and ten cents, roughly, you know, thirty-six thousand dollars.
And keep in mind with the lighting, we've saved thirty thousand dollars for the lighting. So really, when you put all that together, that'll cost us six extra thousand dollars.
But this is, this is a good sized board. You'll be able to see it from all the seats in the home investor. The next option. The video component, you can see it's a little bit bigger. It's eleven and a half feet by fifteen and three quarters, so a little bit bigger. The overall size of, of this is twenty-four by thirty. So, a, a much bigger scoreboard and a much bigger video board. The cost of this is a hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And keep in mind, just like the other one, we've already approved the eighty-two thousand fifty-four for the base scoreboard. So this would be an increase in cost to the project of forty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Do we lose anything on the scoreboard part of this scoreboard?
No.
By adding the video to either option?
No.
It's the same size?
So that option, forty-five thousand more, we saved thirty in lighting, so technically it's about fifteen thousand more. As far as the video option, how's that controlled as far as?
It's, it's controlled, in, in both of these, the, the, that cost includes the hardware and the software mounted in the, in the press box to, to operate this. It, it does come with, with training as well to commissioning.
With training, that we can train our own people to do the custom graphics and all the different things. Now, does that have a component where it can connect to, let's say, if one day we wanted to go approval, we want to show a movie, can it connect that way also?
And that doesn't affect any of the first scoreboard option, the wire?
No, the scoreboard and the sponsorships of the original scoreboard are exactly the same. All we've done is add this component here. You can see in this option also, we've added four other, four additional sponsorship locations. They're a little bit narrower just because the, the video board is wider. This, this right here is eleven and a half feet tall.
So the sponsorship locations, that money would go back to the school or could we split those up, allow some of the programs to have the bottom sponsorships and then move the, use the upper sponsorships to help pay for, offset this board?
We can do what we want to. The original one with the four at the bottom, I met with Mr. Malickman and Coach Flatt, told them, hey, that's up to you all to kind of do if they want to do a one-year, two-year. But with this option, I mean, if we want to continue to let them have the bottom four and we take the top four and have those funds to help offset the price of that, I'm fine with that. We would probably just need to put somebody in charge of going out and getting those sponsorships and.
Well, even if they're, they're with the way this is made too, we could do custom video sponsorships that we could play here in the games that would allow them to do that. And if, I would like to see us shoot this option. And when we do that, I would like to see us set up a class that specifically goes out and does this and they go out and get the sponsorships and that money can go to help pay for the class, pay for the board, ongoing fees with that and everything so that, you know, we have a component where there are kids that are getting to practice working with these scoreboards.
Keep in mind, these are all printed, so you could print them yearly if you signed a one-year contract with whatever sponsor, two years, three years, and, and these are printed as well. So you could do one big sponsor here or two smaller ones, you know, have everyone.
And if I'm not mistaken, the original, if we let them know in time of who the sponsors are.
Yeah.
And we can get that logo on a vector file, the first, it'll be shipped to us with their sponsor already on it, if we can get that in time. If not, then it'll be up to us to kind of go out and locally have somebody, that's my understanding, sign. And we could ask Dr. Holman to think about, you know, putting somebody in charge of that and that way the training can go through them, whether it be I T or somebody of that nature. I mean, he can think about that and let us know who that's gonna be.
Ahead of what Wayne was saying, I do like the, the fact that there's a teaching aspect where students will be able to be learning from this. And then another point that made, that made us do about having the ability to have a little short video clip in there of advertising, you know, so.
Yeah, and even when football season's over, you could have a communication class where you wanted to go out there, do things with that that normally wouldn't be done.
So this is, this is nearly sixteen, we'll call it sixteen feet wide, so these ceiling piles are two feet. So if you start right here, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, it's all the way over there to Mr. Taylor.
Just the video portion?
Just, just the width of the board.
Yeah.
So, I don't think you're gonna have any trouble seeing any of them, certainly not this year.
I mean, even if we have graduation on the field, we can put that up on the screen also.
Stream that through video. So I think for the, what we're getting out of it, the extra cost, that option is probably the best option.
And I would like to make a motion that we do that option.
The one twenty-seven option?
Yes.
A hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
And in that motion, I make the motion that we accept that and we set a class to control this board.
Got one of the high school communication classes?
Yes.
I think my local high school has a communications class and they have a, a radio program and television program that they do in the school and it, it's a huge hit with, with kids. My nephew, when he was in school, he's funny anyway, but it just gave him an outlet to kind of, you know, have, have an interest in something that he didn't get in some of the other classes.
And, and just out of full transparency, so everybody knows, the project we asked today is for the contractors to have the bleachers, the lighting, and the scoreboard done by July thirty-first. So just know that the first few games, school don't start until first of August, so there's probably not going to be full capacity use on that and training until we get into school. So, it's probably not going to be up and going fully until we get, I just want everybody to be aware of that because of the timeline of everything gets done and starting football and starting school, you're not gonna have time to train the kids and everybody like that, so.
Now, I will tell you that they were, I mean, there were some scoreboards that were just absolutely huge, you know, and, and of course, the cost is commensurate with that. But in, in talking with the, the manufacturer, these two sizes seem to be compatible with, with what you guys were trying to do and where the, the board is gonna be situated in relation to the, to the bleachers and.
All right, so we got a motion by William Maston for the hundred and twenty-six thousand nine seventy-seven option. Just remember, this is in, this will be the forty-five thousand extra on what we already approved. And setting up a class, communications class to control the board. Second, Bruce Hudgens, any discussion?
Yes, real quick, and just to make sure, in this motion, those former sponsorships?
On the bottom. Will be for the high school.
And the four surrounding the video board will be?
Up to the, whoever's in charge of the communication to go out and get sponsors and that money will come back to the board to help pay for the scoreboard.
All right.
Any other discussion? Crystal, can we roll call that?
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stone Suffer?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Bruce Hudgens?
Yes.
Jordan Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Dapha Style?
Yes.
William Maston?
Yes.
Ten four zero, opposed, motion passes.
All right. Thank you. I will, that's scoreboard. Reason this, one reason this was so important tonight is it affects the foundation design, obviously, you know, it's twelve feet taller, so we just needed to make sure we increased the foundations for the scoreboard. So we'll get that started tomorrow and get that included in the, in the project.
Email me that and I'll email it to all four of them.
Yeah, there's a whole lot more information available, but under concepts, there's several tabs here and so when you get the email, bottom tab, concepts, and this information's there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Thank you. All right, so now we'll move over to O C A recognition.
Well, it would be in very poor taste and defy social distancing if I came and hugged all of y'all, so I won't do that. However, I would like to thank you from the bottom of my heart on behalf of the teachers for the message that you have sent them tonight. Because the message you have sent the teachers tonight is they really, really matter and they're really important to y'all. And that's a message they've needed to hear for a while, so I'm so thankful that y'all made the move and did that tonight. The only thing I would add is in the future, as we go towards tomorrow and the tomorrows and tomorrows after that, whenever there are increases to put into salary schedule, please be mindful of keeping the, the distance between the steps so that everybody has a place to grow. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Then for everybody's information, the director's board, it's in your packet if you just want to read over that, I'm not gonna read through it. And I'd like to thank the education committee, Roger and Philip for being here tonight. Crystal and I got to meet them at last week at the meeting, so I appreciate y'all coming and we'll see you tomorrow night too, so. But thank y'all for being here.
And that is one thing I was gonna say, but guys, we do appreciate it. We do.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate that comment.
Any, any way that you need assistance from us, please don't hesitate.
We'd be happy to help you any way we can.
So anybody got anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Ms. Iler. She put a lot of work in on that page, because she helped us out a whole lot on that.
I didn't do it all by myself.
I know, I know.
Crystal and Sherry and, and Dr. Holman.
I appreciate you.
It was a group effort and, and so needed, so needed.
Alright.
This is important because all of those are counting now.
I'll entertain the motion to adjourn. Motion, Dolphus Dow, second, Mitch Stonecifer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so we'll go to the work session. Anybody want to break or go on?
Go on.
We're all on. Alright, so the first thing on the work session, we've already took care of. We'll take that off. Then we'll move on to discuss Tech Trip Academy.
I was having some printer problems, so I apologize, this isn't the best. But I wanted y'all to have something to kind of take home and just kind of like a summary, a little bit of what Tech Trip does. I discussed, I was here last time and kind of discussed a little bit about my story with our homeschool journey, and I know all of you aren't here. And I also have some letters. I thought I was having technical difficulties. So I did want to read some letters or part of a letter from some of our current parents that I think might be helpful. Oh, I'm here, I'm here. Beautiful. I think I literally. I dropped them. I'm with them. Well, my main objective is, I'm, I'm a parent of a Tech Trip Academy. I have four students in the program. I'm a longtime homeschooler. This is my tenth year, so I'm not, not new at this. We started our homeschool journey in California. We're from Overton County, me and my husband both, and he's a lineman. He's been an alumnus for thirty years, and we decided to leave and go make some money. And so that's what we did, went to California and took a, our RV and our two kids, and we moved to California for a little while. And our house is empty here in Overton County. And our, our oldest was going to be starting school, and I didn't really like the idea of putting a public school in California. So homeschooling was a really good option there. There was a lot of support. There's charter schools in California that create checks and balances. You have to create your curriculum, and, and they, they really check everything. You meet with a teacher and you lay out your plans, what you're going to do every day, what you're going to accomplish, and it's very rigorous, and there's a lot of testing. And so my kids were where they were supposed to be, which is very important to me. I want my kids to have the best education. I sacrificed my career to do that. I do have a bachelor's degree in finance. But we felt like that was the best thing for our family, and so we dove in and had that support. And then fast forward five years, we moved back to Tennessee, and homeschooling has become very popular here, which was great. There's a lot of clubs, there's a lot of things, but there's still just not those checks and balances that I was used to. I was used to having, you know, making sure that my kid was where, where the other kids are. Like I said, very important to me. Education was very top priority for my children. So that was our first year, just kind of, maybe you guys know, there's not a lot of homeschool laws in Tennessee. There's no checks and balances. You can really kind of do what you want to do. And that's just, that's just fact. I heard about Tech Trip Academy. I actually was, I think, the first family in Overton County to apply for Tech Trip Academy. It was kind of neat because I ended up with like, who is this and what is this? And I had some mutual friends with Brandy Below, which is pretty much the financial lady that, that's over at Tech Trip Academy. And I think, well, the board member knows who that is. So I was kind of investigating, kind of figuring out, I don't know, this kind of sounds good to be true. Well, then come the checks and balances that I have been looking for, you know, that I want for my students. I want to make sure my students are where they're supposed to be. So this is my fourth year of the program. Like I said, I do have four children in the program. We have bi-weekly assessments that we turn in. I have to turn in their work every two weeks. We have Tennessee certified teachers that look at that work every two weeks. We are also part of the K through third reading assessment testing, so we, we do have to do that just as well. Tech Trip Academy partnerships with the school system. So we are considered public school students, therefore that's where the funding comes in. I'm assuming that you guys know that, but I'm just going to lay it all out. Since we are considered public school students, we are in your school system, we do count as students, so that funding comes to Overton County. Then Overton County in turn pays Tech Trip for their services, and that, that's kind of commerce. So it's kind of a win-win. There's money funneling into the school system that's not, that had not been there before. Us as homeschoolers are doing what we want to do over here, and that money's non-existent because we are not public school students. So when we sign up with Tech Trip Academy, we become public school students, and now that funding comes from the state to the Board of Educate, you know, to the Board of Education. And then they pay Tech Trip for the services. The services that Tech Trip provides, the resources are available. I've got a few letters from some parents, and most of these parents are, have already been homeschoolers. These are not people that have been pulled from the public school system. These are already homeschoolers that's already been doing homeschool for many years in, in some instances. I would like to read just a little bit if that, if we have time for that. This particular parent said, among the many benefits Tech Trip Academy offers, one is a sense of belonging. My children enjoy participating in group activities and field trips offered by the program. From holiday crafts and parties to plays at the Coman County Playhouse, we always enjoy getting to participate in ways many homeschoolers over the years have done without. So I know a lot, none of you are homeschoolers, I'm assuming. But as, as a homeschool family, we take the burden of all of those costs of teaching our children. And a lot of times, we are a one-income family. So, you know, we have to be really careful how we spend things. You know, we want our children to attend classes, like Peachtree Learning Center. Those costs add up really quickly to have classes outside of the house. Or doing field trips, you know, we don't get a group field trip rate or a school rate. Now we do. We have been enjoyed going to the Coman County Playhouse, and we get to pay seven dollars, just like a school would get to do. So that's so important. A lot of our students, this particular mom, her student's been a cheerleader. She is now aged out of Tech Trip. It only goes through eighth grade. And she had, she had mentioned that it's been such a positive impact on my four children. One is already phased out of the program, and another will follow at the end of the school year, unless the budget can be expanded. I truly hope you will consider expanding beyond and reaching more students so that we can also access the resources offered through this amazing program. Her student last year, her cheerleader, was actually voted, I don't know, homecoming queen, so that's pretty, that's pretty cool. So we are involved in the school system. We want to be involved and be able to do those activities and have those resources and give our children the best education possible without having such a huge financial burden that it does, that it does come with. I have a couple others if y'all would like to hear, or I can actually send these out. One, this particular parent joined during COVID. As we know, COVID has changed the way that we're schooling. That's not going to change. You know, people have gotten a taste of, hey, we can do this different. Maybe they didn't want their children in the classroom from fear of COVID. And this parent was very concerned with the health of, of my child, as well for my wife who has MS. I've never homeschooled any of my children before, and I did not know what to expect. Tech Trip opened their arms up to us and helped us through every step of the process. With the resources Tech Trip has, my son did not feel isolated at home. I was very concerned about his social skills before we started the program, but with the clubs that have been offered, my son has flourished. He has made friends through the academic and skill clubs. He has made huge strides in reading this year, as well as other subjects. The online school in third grade was difficult due to not being, to all being new and having internet problems at the school and teachers not being able to spend the time to focus online while teaching the other in-person students in the classroom. We felt disconnected until teachers were used for online only. With Tech Trip, we have additional resources that he loves along with the curriculum. The educational field trips allow him to connect with other students and to do hands-on learning from what his curriculum teaches in his books. So that's the other thing, like with, you know, like as homeschoolers, sometimes we just don't have those opportunities to connect with other students. Or if we do that, it's kind of a complete, you know, at a cost. Like I mentioned, the, the program is K eight right now. I've got one that speaks about going into high school, and I'm already thinking, how long can you keep those checks and balances in place? And I would love to see that program expanded. In order for it to expand, we need to expand the whole program. It's only in four counties. All the other states that Tech Trip is in, which includes, I think now ten states, it's in the whole state, except Tennessee, where the only one has just four counties. If we were to expand into the state, then that would funnel enough students in to make the high school profitable and, you know, just doable. High school's a whole different ballgame. There's going to be more teacher-to-student ratios, more staff to be hired. I mentioned there are certified, Tennessee certified teachers. That could create jobs right here in this county. These are part-time positions. This is a great position for a retired teacher that can come in and, and do that. It's all online. Or it could be someone that's wanting to stay home with their children, but still wants to build a work and want to keep their certification up, so.
What counties are?
It's actually in Putnam, Overton, Warren, and Rome.
And how many Tech Trip students are there?
Overall?
In those four counties?
Okay, so Overton has a hundred, Putnam has three hundred, and the other two counties have a hundred. And this isn't recreating the wheel. In Idaho, they're already through high school right now. They have sixty thousand students. They all have, you know, the test scores, I think, were sent to Mike. Did she send those results to you, some of the test scores from Idaho? I think that's been like a biggie, like, what about the testing? Our students test very well. Some of them test, you know, above average, some of them test average, some below. It's really not much different than, than public school.
So the test scores do go to our county?
If, if it stayed the way it was, yes, but if we create a virtual school, which we have discussed a little bit with Mike, which is really what Overton County needs to do. We need, we need that option. I think there's, no, put me, I think there's forty-seven virtual schools in Tennessee right now. So they're increasing every, you know, every year, especially with COVID. You know, a, a virtual school would be an option. So if that was the case, if it would create a virtual school to expand the program, then it would stick with that virtual school.
The scores would stick with that school. It would still affect our district, but it would just go to that school.
Yes, right.
Then graduation rate, I mean, I, we're not in high school yet, but other states, does that affect their graduation?
They have a very high graduation rate.
But it does affect that if, if we were to know that it would.
I would assume yes.
Then, I'm sorry. If, if we did go over a hundred, from my understanding, we'd have to create a new school number, which would be like a virtual academy or whatever. I'm assuming that's similar to like White Plains, Vidal academies there, so. Saying that, we have a school number under reach. Well, we have reach. Well, I mean, we have a school number. From my understanding, if we go over a hundred kids in Tech Trip, we have to create a new school number. Isn't what I was.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, so the, the understood is they have.
If you do go, if you do have to create a separate one in reach, then from a state aspect, we have to have administrators and personnel to be there to monitor that. That was my question, whether the resources would be, would be responsible for providing in order to accomplish that? Because the Pudmums got three hundred, and they've got Vidal. I know they've got people.
Right, and they're using their Vidal for not just, we're just piggy, I would say, piggybacking off of them. Their staff does nothing for Tech Trip. Tech Trip does all of those resources. They hire the teachers, they pay the teachers. They do the testing in other states. They, they do all of those costs. Those costs, it would not increase any cost, you know, for us. Except if you wanted to use the rich building and do a virtual school and offer that to other students, you know, as an option, as a viable option. But now as far as like the Tech Trip side of it, they handle all of those costs.
So Putnam, Putnam, Warren, and Rome, now that have it, they're just limited to their county only, just like we are in our county?
Rome is, Rome does surround counties.
So Rome does surround, but nobody does statewide?
Nobody does statewide. And that, that's the thing, somebody will do statewide. I'm not sure if you know, but there is another competitor that has come on this year, new to Tennessee, and it's called Harmony. And it is already statewide. They have not grown that much yet. I actually called in, called in myself and just, you know, asked some questions as a parent. Hey, it works very, very soon with Tech Trip Academy, except they do not offer the field trips like we offer. And that's a big plus for a lot of our families because those field trips are offered for free. They do not come out of the budget that Tech Trip pays for them. But they have already partnershiped, and they are statewide, and I cannot think of the county right now. I apologize for that. But Harmony Academy is in Tennessee, and they are statewide, and they will start to grow. And so I would hate to see Overton County lose an opportunity that's right there, because somebody will take it. It will happen.
Ms. Davis, to make sure I understood correctly, for us to expand to a high school level, we would have to incorporate the statewide?
We would need to go statewide to have enough students, yes.
To have enough students, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah. Right now, there just would not be enough students to funnel into a high school program to make it even, you know, profitable at all. Or even sustainable, like the first year that they did in Idaho, they didn't have as many students, and they, you know, they lost money. And that's just, that's just numbers. That's how it is.
We're looking at currently, you know, the program, it says roughly four hundred students. Between the four counties have roughly a hundred.
No, because Putnam has three hundred.
So six hundred?
Six hundred. I mean, as far as I know, that those contracts with those counties would stay in place, or those would stay with those counties. But then we would pick everything else up. Just being word of mouth, I've seen some of the waiting list. For instance, I think I've run before, White County, there's sixty or seventy students on White County's waiting list, and it doesn't even exist in White County yet. And that's completely word of mouth. I mean, there's, there's three hundred people on the waiting list right now. You know, if, I think someone had mentioned, I don't know the money part, but someone had mentioned that with our one hundred students in Overton County, that they had gotten, that the education system had gotten four hundred thousand dollars. So that's around four thousand dollars a student that Overton County is getting. So, I mean, there's hundreds, thousands, millions of dollars should be made there. That's just sitting there for someone to grab up.
Is that why?
That would pay for all kinds of schools.
That's what I was going to ask. I think the last time Wayne had said, there was like forty?
Or waitlist?
Maybe on the waiting list? Does that sound about right?
We had talked to go to a hundred fifty. No, I think that the last year, the, the last time I spoke with him, we were down to, we were down about three, you know. So, so there wasn't very, it was like, last year at one time, there was about forty or something.
Yeah, and it, it fluctuates. I mean, you know, it fluctuates. And, and that's the thing, a lot of people are like, oh, well, it's not available. It's full, so they just don't pull, put an application out there. But if we say, hey, we have spots, those numbers are going to start, you know.
So we're at the hundred now, so in order, if we wanted to go up and keep it within our county, what would the next level be? Would it be one fifty?
I mean, that's really would be up to, to you.
So there's not like a number that you have?
Okay, so the, the hundred thing about like the, having to create a new school code. I looked, I had Dr. John at Sylvan look, because he's been an advocate to try to help me try to navigate these waters. We could not find anything with this limit of a hundred. I, I didn't find anything with that that said you had to have another school code or a separate school to go over a hundred. I think that the hundred was usually just because of the budget, because of the way that the funding works. You know, that you have to pay so much, and then you're kind of working on flashers money.
Can you, maybe reach out to the State Department and ask?
I don't know. What Wayne said was, it assured me that if you went over a hundred, you had to get a number.
Right, right. And me and, me and Wayne had discussed it, and I, I couldn't find it anywhere, and he just said, that's what he had heard. I've never seen anything in black and white saying that. I'm not saying it's not fair. But Dr. John at Sylvan, I don't know, I, I think y'all know who he is, because, you know, he is doing the Spanish class for the high school. He would love to see it into the high school because he has so many students now that, that he's helping or, or schooling through his system. He uses Apex Learning System, and so he, he would love to see it go through high school to help his students. He assured me that he would have at least fifty high school students that he knew that would sign up for the program.
My concern on it is if there's that much money that's available, why other schools hasn't already stepped up to the plate and gone statewide and moved onto the program?
Because it's just, you know, it's so new in Tennessee. This is the fourth year going in. It's just a new program, you know. Like I said, all the other states are statewide. All the, all the other states are statewide. Indiana was new last year. They went statewide right away, and there's certain high schools. They went statewide right away and there's certain high schools next year.
I think public education has always had a bad taste in its mouth for homeschooling. And I go back to a situation I had when I was supervisor of attendance. Uh, I had aunts, uncles, son's school teachers and everybody coming to me about, can you not do anything about getting these kids into school? And of course, they reported into the attendance supervisor like they're supposed to. And, uh, they were, I won't mention the name of a, of a homeschool, but they were in a homeschool situation. Pay thirty-five dollars, you're a member of the faculty, do anything you want. So I wrote that homeschool agency and asked them for documentation of those students being enrolled. So I could be kosher and, and report. And they kindly told me to jump in the lake. And I had to get a little nasty myself and I wrote them back and said, I need proof of enrollment or I'm taking those students to court. Well, they sent me this letter back and said, yeah, they're enrolled with us. So then my hands became tied. Because of that, I thought, well, you know, we have people out here who are in homeschool. We need to be working more together than separately. As you can see, the athletics are being included and so on. So it's like I wanted to see something for those people that would provide a quality education so that when and if those students transitioned back into our system, they wouldn't be three grade levels behind. And so that's where we came up with becoming involved with Tech Trip. I think we started off with twenty-five students.
And then fifty.
And fifty and then increased that to a hundred. So I, I really don't know, uh.
You're one of the first school systems that started with them four years ago, or?
Pardon?
You're one of the first school systems that started with them four years ago.
Yes, Putnam and Overton was the first.
Was the first in Overton.
Sam Brooks actually seek Tech Trip out. I guess, maybe you know that, I'm not sure. Um, and he brought the program to Tennessee. Sam did. So, um, and then, you know, Sam has created, like his Vidal is growing. Um, and so his concentration has kind of been, has been there, um, which is great. You know, that's a great option. You know, but we don't have here. We don't have that here in Overton County. And I've been involved somewhat with that. I hope it kept testing there last year, um, with all of our students. Um, and so, you know, it's a great option, you know, to have that. And I appreciate you bringing it, you know. But like I said, the checks and balances and, you know, we're testing just like all the other students. We send out practice tests. Um, so our students can be prepared. Otherwise, you know, homeschoolers, there are those homeschoolers. I know what you're thinking about those homeschoolers. But there are us homeschoolers that want the best quality education and we sacrifice to make that happen where our kids, I sacrifice every day monetary, emotionally. And we feel like it's been the best for our family. Now, I'm not saying I would ever put my kid in school. I'm not saying that we, we, you know, my sister-in-law teaches for school, the school system. Um, we wanna support our school system. We would love to be involved. I had mentioned before, uh, to Sam, that I'd love to have the option, you know, if I want to drop Lincoln off for biology class at the high school. I could pay for the class or let him just do that, like an à la carte. Uh, those are things that actually, um, that were available when we were part of a charter school. You could come in. You know, that's hard for me to teach biology. Um, or chemistry or those, those type of things. There are things that can be grouped cities. There are private people that are teaching, you know, those classes and they're, you know, they're, they're great. They really are great. But it's hard to juggle all of that. So we would love to partnership and be more involved and be able to, you know, be, have a quality education just like every other student out there.
And I'm not mistaken, Mike, when we went and met with Putnam County, that's what their goal was. To get it where if you wanted to drop your kid off to one class, they could go to that one class at the high school. And they could leave after that.
They were considering that.
Yeah. I think that they had staffing issues when I, when I spoke to Sam about it last summer. I think he was afraid that the class size would be too big or there wouldn't, you know, be enough, you know, teachers, you know, for that. But I think that that's a great, you know, it's a great option for our students, for sure.
Yeah, if I understand the high school component correctly, they said we would have to build that, like take in ninth grade first and then go on to maybe tenth grade the next year.
Well, and what they did in Idaho, they, they went and did ninth and tenth one year and then they're adding, they added eleventh and then the next year they added twelve. Kind of grow with the program, grow with our students.
I'm just, sorry.
Unfortunately, you know, I'm gonna have one going into high school and I'm, you know, I've, I've been researching for the last several months, what am I gonna do? You know, I want him to have, I, it's always been important, I want him to have a certified diploma. And he's, he's, if we can't do that as homeschoolers, um, it's just a lot harder.
I, I'm just for me, I mean, we're at the hundred and we've got some on the waiting list and it's not gonna create anything with a school number and having to pay for administrative staff. I mean, open it up to our county and service our county's needs. I'm just a little weary right now on the whole state aspect of it, as far as opening it up to everybody you don't know and where they're coming from and background and that's just me, I think that question.
And one thing I wanted to, to add, not to detract from any of this. The governor is currently revamping the BEP and we don't know what that's gonna look like. I have read some articles that say there is consideration on the table to attach BEP funding to accountability and test scores and things like that. So we need to make sure we know what we're getting into and how our BEP funding might be affected cause that would hurt us so bad if they decided with the revamping, oh yeah, well, if you're not this level, you're not getting your full BEP. You're only getting sixty percent or whatever.
Right, and I think that we are.
That's a really good point.
I mean, that's just something to think about. And I know this isn't on the fast track and that hopefully will be landed by the time y'all are really making the decision about that. But that's something to consider because, I mean, especially our county leans on that BEP a lot. Some counties don't. I mean, you look at Franklin County and Nashville, probably didn't care that much about the BEP. But the rural counties that don't have as high a tax base, we need that BEP. We need more BEP than they give us.
I think that we're concentrating on, you think that our students are gonna test poorly and that's just not the case. A lot of them score, you know, I've seen several of the scores parents shared with me from Putnam and they scored way above the state. Way above the state. Um, and I, I know that Mike has some figures from Idaho. What the students there tested, six thousand students and they, they scored just as well as, as the public school system. So I really feel like that's not a non-issue.
I hope it is, but that's just something we need to keep in mind.
But you could still, you, you wouldn't have to say unlimited. You could still say, hey, we're gonna do five hundred the first year. We're gonna do, you know, or a thousand the first year and fifteen hundred or whatever. You could still limit the number. You wouldn't have to say free for all, you know.
So Union County, I don't know if they have a program similar. But they opened it up and they have like four thousand, I think, and it gets a little.
Are you talking about Tennessee Connections or what?
I'm not sure.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, the name of it was K-12.
Yes, which is partnership with Tennessee Connection, so yeah.
But, uh, Mike had, Mike had, Mr. Gilpatrick mentioned that to me and I, I spoke with them and I asked them, I called him and, and the director over there was gracious enough to speak with me and this, uh, Dylan, Kim Dillon, the supervisor of instruction. And we were fortunate enough to speak with him for lots of time and we asked numerous questions. And I, I mentioned to Mr. Gilpatrick this, you know, for him to reach out if he wanted to and see as well. But in that district, their scores did, uh, the scores were not what they wanted, I guess, let's just say it that way. Uh, but now like Mike said, well, let me say this, there's like three thousand students in that county, where we have thirty-one hundred. So we're, we're virtually the same sized county.
Sure, yeah, that's a good point.
But if I'm not mistaken, uh, they have about that many students also in this program. So, and they have, you know, like, they're from all over the state, they're from everywhere. And he was talking to me about numerous issues such as, uh, truancy and, and other things that they had dealt with and, it, it was a little alarming, you know. But, uh, now what my case is saying though, if we opened it up larger here for the people here, I, I don't see any, I'm not saying I see a problem with anything, okay?
Sure, I know.
I'm just saying that what my case said sounded sensible. Uh, I'll speak with Wayne Sales this week and find out where it is about the one hundred. Or I'll speak with Sam Brooks. I'll speak and find out somewhere other about the one hundred and.
Sure.
And I would like to help as many as I can. But when I spoke with Union, Union County, they did say that the stores hurt them. And you're welcome to speak with them too. I mean, you're.
Yeah, oh sure. Yeah, yeah.
I, I would like to say, I think there's a big fear of the unknown here. And I don't think we should jump in over our heads. I'd like to see us not close the door on this, but rather there's a lot of questions that need answering. And, uh, perhaps we could, we could explore those questions and, and see how this might be beneficial to everyone, uh, included.
And I do wanna speak for K-12, cause I do have students that have done K-12 or who tried K-12. K-12 is a whole nother ballgame. Like, it's completely different than what we're doing. Like, completely utterly different. You sit in front of a computer screen for six or seven hours. As a second grader, a third grader, a fourth grader, that is just not feasible. They are eventually going to shut off and that information is no longer gonna be, they're no longer gonna get, gonna get that information. With Tech Trip Academy as homeschoolers, you know, some of those are public school students that are doing public school at home. There's the difference. We are traditional homeschoolers where we're using curriculum, we're using hands-on things, we're using activities. We are learning to learn. We're not learning to test. We're learning to learn. We're learning to love to learn. And that's what we do. And usually our students as homeschoolers really do test well because they are exposed so much life. I have, I have a two-year-old that I promise, if I brought her in here, you would not think she was two. She knows all her letters, she knows her ABCs. She can, she can recognize a lot of the letters themselves and take them. Because, and I have not worked with her, she is absorbed from teaching the other kids. So, um, you know, some of our kids, we know, we know Latin. We know so many things that, homeschoolers are so enriched in those things that we delve in. So I do think, you know, talking to Union City is one thing, but it's, uh, you know, that's a totally different program than what Tech Trip Academy is.
So if everybody's good, we'll have Dr. Holman follow up with Sam Brooks, talk about the waiting list and the hundred school number and kinda go for that.
And even if it's just like right now, just do surrounding counties or just pick up, you know, some surrounding counties or, or counties have a large, you know, waiting.
That, that's what I was gonna ask. Uh, and this is just a personal, uh, opinion, not an opinion of the board. We do have a need for some in the, uh, high school level for this. And, and I personally would like to see it expanded to the high school level. But now I don't know about necessarily taking on the whole world. But if that were to include, you know, our surrounding counties that touches our joint, you know, something that is close to home that's comparable to us, you know, uh, that's something I'd be open to, uh, looking into. Cause, uh, cause I'm not trying to be smart, but right now we're saying, we're gonna take this money kindergarten through eight and then after that, thanks, you know?
Yeah, they kind, we're kinda locked out in the cold a little bit. We really are. It's like now, now what do I do? Uh, especially like the one letter, you know, he was, he was public school and now, you know, he's got all this support and he may continue on. And then it's like, okay, well, wait a minute, now the option isn't there. We have to have enough students to funnel into a high school program.
Right, and that would also be contingent on the number aspect is to what we'd have to know, you know? If, you know, if it's twenty-five kids, fifty kids, if that's something that would be.
I, I think the magic number was fifty students for a high school.
For a high school.
Oh, a high, for a high school, yeah.
And I agree with Jordan. It's just, you, you get to that level and open it up. I mean, if you're gonna be held accountable for the stores and that, then, you know, how are we gonna hold accountable to somebody in Memphis and Shelby County and things of that nature? Where if it's more localized and you've got more control.
Well, all, all of it is, you know, all of it's virtual. Um, I hope work those truancy reports each month. Um, and of those six hundred students, we may have ten that are like, hey, we need, we need this. And usually it's dwindling down to maybe one. Um, so, you know, our attendance is very good. Um, sometimes their programs are really, people leave. You know, they're like, we don't wanna do all that. I mean, I hear that all the time. We don't wanna test. We don't wanna turn us up and we don't wanna ruin our business. So most of the time, we expose people.
You go out, do track, how they're doing, if they're getting behind.
Yes, yes. We have Tennessee certified teachers that look at all of their work. Um, it's turned in online, um, for each subject.
And it's my opinion, just like it is yours, Jordan, that I'm not saying that we should jump four feet into the water on this. We should gently wade out like we did with this program at the beginning. But the thing is, is that as Ms. Ellinger said, this funding is so important to us. And if this is a way that we can open it up and get more funding, that's not gonna hurt our BEP, then this should be an option that we look at that will bring money into the county that wasn't previously paid.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is if we're gonna be financially and education invested in this, it needs to be beneficial to everybody. You know, not just us or not just, uh, uh, an online student or having, like I say, I'm not trying to be smart.
So is everybody good with Dr. Holman following up with Sam Brooks, uh, checking on the hundred-plus school number? Find out who's on the waiting list, then, uh, we'll ask about, uh, or we'll kind of look into more expanding to the high school level and how many kids we need and things of that nature.
And also let's look in to see if we can use the Reach level, because I mean, that's a number we have.
If we do have to have.
If we have to have one, so then we don't have to go through all of the paperwork and then we'd have to get a new one. We have a school number that we could use. Cause if I'm not mistaken, in Reach right now, there are multiple grade levels there that are taken care of, correct?
There are.
Okay, perfect. Is that good to everybody?
Doctor, Doctor Catherine Aarhart brought a, a team up from Putnam County. And I'm gonna brag on us just a little bit, cause she brought a team up from Putnam County to look at our Reach program. And that is exactly what their Vidal program is having there. And they've expanded it further than, than we could or have expanded.
We'll look at the rest.
One little thing, the, the, the students that we have now Reach, you know, in all the different areas that Reach, Reach. The, the students that we have over in, in the Reach building now, they're in that number too, so that we need to take, and, and take, they're in.
So when you find out, we just need to make sure the hundred plus what we've gotten rolled are there and need more over that. Okay, so we'll follow up and hopefully by next meeting, we'll kind of have some answers from Dr. Holman on what he's found out.
He's gonna be a policy kind of reminder, a little research.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I'm up to do that, yeah.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions on that? Um, I've got a few things. Does anybody else have anything?
Quickly, I would like to say one thing. There's a paper in your pack to tell how many students were out today from Putnam. I can wing it all to be worth it.
Something we need to start thinking about.
Yeah.
Currently, from a insurance aspect, all of our teachers, professionals, we pay a hundred percent of a single policy. Uh, all of our support staff, uh, we only pay, I think, forty-five hundred. Well, I don't know the percentage of that. But there is some things coming, uh, that says from, uh, I think, uh, supports, there's insurance equitability aspect that's gonna be more in line of where you have to be equal, whether it's support staff or professional. So, uh, we need to be thinking about, I'll ask Crystal to kind of run some numbers, like number of support staff now with the insurance, how much we're paying, if we went to the same as we did professional teacher at the seven thousand, I believe is the number. Roughly what that extra would be. Uh, it's gonna be, get to the point, I believe, based on what we've been told, that it's gonna be something we have to do versus kind of nothing we wanna do. So, uh, Crystal, if you wanna kind of look at those numbers and just say, how many support staff we got, what it's costing us now versus what it would if we boot them up to the full insurance equitability aspect. So just be thinking about that the next month or so. We'll have those numbers and kind of start looking at that. I've had Crystal to print everybody a copy of a building program timeline. Uh, this is just kind of some things I put together. You know, after we get the football thing started, September timeframe, we'll start visiting schools again. we'll start visiting schools again. Um, you know, our current bonds will be paid off in two and a half years and we need to start that building program back up again. So by the time we visit all the schools, get all the data, determine what maintenance can do versus what we need an architect to do, get the architects involved, get that back, go to the county commission, tons of stuff in there, it'll be two years before you know it. Um, so hopefully September timeframe, I'll kind of start that, let everybody know, we'll start walking the schools and making our list again, uh, to go from there. Um, uh, we talked about the contractor meeting. Uh, so with the contractor meeting we had today, the bids will be in January twenty-fifth at two o'clock here. Uh, so once those are over, the quicker we approve those bids as a board, the quicker they can get started to work. So my recommendation is the twenty-fifth is a Tuesday. Possibly moving their February meeting up to maybe January twenty-seventh or that, uh, following Tuesday, which I think is, I don't know, you know what day that is?
Hang on a second.
February first, maybe?
Uh, February first, yeah.
So either, either the twenty-seventh, that Thursday, or the next Tuesday, or February first, moving our meeting up. That way we're not having to hold an additional meeting just to approve that. Um, so if anybody's open to doing the twenty-seventh or the first, we could actually do that. I know it's three weeks away, February is a short month anyway.
Let's do the first.
So, the first, February first?
Yeah.
That's probably the better option. I don't think anything's gonna happen, but there's some legal requirements after we open the bids before I come back and make a recommendation. There's some legal requirements that we need to do and then process the bids before we make a recommendation. And I don't like to do, I, I like to have a little window to make sure I can get that done in case there is an irregularity with the bid. We've got some time to talk to county attorney about how to proceed, so. So we'll have our February meeting, February first, that way the football field bids will be on there, uh, and we can get that approved.
I got one question, Paul. They ask every day, will we be, will we be able to play football, learn, start of the year?
Yep.
All right.
So our meeting?
You're all ready, you're all ready.
Yeah, write that down, yeah.
You're all ready, right here.
Yeah. Our meeting with the contractors today, they put it in different phases. Phase one is for the scoreboard, the bleachers and the lighting to be up by July thirty-first for our kids to play. Now, keep in mind, if it starts going in, if that concession stand's not fully built, we may have to work and throw some tents up to do, cook hamburgers and stuff out of. But the whole intent and goal is lighting bleachers and scoreboard to be up ready to go for our kids to play there.
Great.
So, um, if you hadn't had a chance, uh, stop the high school at the LA bathroom, Steve Mosley and that maintenance staff's done a great job remodeling those. Um, then, um, JROTC, got an email from Ms. Riddle today. Uh, I told y'all last month, we're gonna go to Clark Range and York, look at their programs. So January twentieth, we'll be meeting at York at eight-thirty in the morning. If anybody wants to go, give me a call, you can ride up there with me or whatever. Um, LA gym floor, please look at this. I'm not gonna harp on it tonight, but I met with Mr. Melk today. Uh, two years ago, the flooding came, water come up from the bottom. We convinced insurance to pay for it, they paid for a portion of it to be replaced, not the full floor, floor. Now there's issues, it's cracking, we're sending it down so bad. You, look at the pictures, please, they've had to put tape down where the boards are popping up, it's so bad. Um, Richard's in conversation with Tommy Stevens now, hopefully to try to get insurance to replace a new floor. Not very positive on that feeling right now. But if by chance they replace a new floor, let's keep in mind, our building program, we talked about new bleachers in there, we don't wanna take old bleachers out, put a new floor down and put old bleachers back in. So we need to think about if we need to do something with that when that comes up. Um, then next meeting, I think Dr. Mason and his family will be here to talk about the purchase of the land. Uh, hopefully give us a number that we talked about, uh, so hopefully that will be next meeting. I think that's it.
Yeah, they're all for next meeting.
Come to that. I'll shut up.
And the bathrooms are beautiful, the ones in Academy, so, and they're gonna, they're gonna get better. And if you haven't seen them before, uh, to see them now, it's just a show to see.
All right, thank you. Thank y'all for coming, appreciate it.